We will now. We will now call this meeting to order. Um, let's have the pledge of allegiance.
Our blood allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The true republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I have roll call, please?
Counselor Hughes here, Counselor Lidkey.
Here.
Counselor McElroy.
Here.
Counselor Prokop.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Tenbusch.
Here.
Mayor Dring.
Here, thank you very much, Sadie. Um, we are at the first citizen and a community group comment. My first citizen is Jim Meari.
Good evening, everyone. All right. Just wanted to give everyone, evening, Mr. Mayor, city council staff. A quick update on the Carl Douglas. Post seventy-four here in. Estacada, of course, I'm the commander because I'm one of the young guys, so that's. That's how it goes these days, but I just want to give you update, we're having a Memorial Day breakfast. At Oddfell's Hall on May twenty-ninth. From seven to eleven pancakes, eggs. Appreciate if everyone come out and support your veterans, we are going to pay for veterans' membership within the Legion. For the first year like we always do. Uh, myself and past Commander Terry Brown will be placing American. Flags on veterans' graves at all of our nine cemeteries. Here in Estacada. On Memorial Day, myself and Commander Brown are both on the cemetery district. Uh, there were three veterans currently on the cemetery. Maintenance district. Let's see, moving on, we're gonna have some training in June. It's called QPR training. And we're gonna collaborate with the Oregon firearm. Safety Coalition. And we'll be giving the training, uh, which leads the ways in preventing veterans firearm suicide. It'll be at Oddfell's Hall. Um, from ten to twelve noon, everyone is welcome, coffee and donuts will be provided. Let's see, my favorite part, this is the. Thing that we're started this year, um, on June fourteenth. The American Legion will be awarding three one thousand dollar scholarships, which is on Flag Day, by the way. For three Estacada High School. Seniors, that's the first year that we're doing that, so. Awesome. See July fourth. Thank you again, Connie. For voting us, appreciate that as the grand marshals. To ride in the front of the parade, it's quite an honor. On America's birthday, thank you. Let's see, lastly, our big event, uh, is on July eighth. The Cruisin', which will be at Timber Park, our ninth annual Cruisin' from ten AM to three PM. Judging of the vehicles, cars, trucks, antiques, uh, pre nineteen thirties to two thousands. Can have eighteen categories of vehicles. Uh, all the trophies are made by veterans and. Always a special thank you to our trophy sponsors, which some are in this room. So we appreciate it. Uh, there's gonna be a raffle for a thousand dollars in cash prizes, a four hundred, a three hundred, a two hundred and a one hundred. Drawing, and that's, uh, being sponsored by Western Kia. Gates open at eight o'clock, and if you bring a tattered or old flag. We will praise that flag for free, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay, I have no more speaker forms in front of me, so we are now at the consent agenda. You've all had a chance to read the council minutes, so can I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, I have a first, do I have a second?
Second.
First and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes, thank you. Okay, we are now at department and committee reports, so I will start off with you, Jerry, nothing tonight?
I didn't have any meetings.
Okay, I did, oh, charity.
Uh, yeah, so I met with the school board and. Uh, busy time of year is always, spring sports are starting to wind down, but graduation's gearing up. So, um, it's just a little chaotic right now, it's just that time of year, but it's, it's all good stuff. Uh, reminder to the community that the spring fling is coming up, the British Invasion, and let's see, oh. Uh, they're still working through translation for our Spanish speaking community. Um, there's been a huge improvement over the past few years, but they know that there's still some things that they need to work, work out and, and improve upon. Um, they're, they have one gal who basically oversees. All of the translations, so. It's, I mean, she has a huge plate, so they kinda. You know, they, they collaborate and then they send it all over to her and then she looks over to make sure that the translation is like. Spot on, that nothing got missed, and then she sends it, and that's. For everything, so she has a very full plate, but they're trying to figure out ways to. Improve that, um, they've got some operations for the operations report, they had. Um, they're working on the seismic upgrade at River Mill, um. Estacada High School Cooling, Cooling Center for the Gym. And let's see, the middle school, they now have a new principal, they announced. Um, her name is Sarah Shields, and she's currently working within the Seaside School District. Um, so she'll be coming on board as the new Estacada Middle School Principal, and they haven't found. The right fit yet for the high school, but as soon as they do, that information will be released. And one thing I wanted to, um, mention, they, Lisa Elves went in and spoke on behalf of Reagan Christine. Um, her daughter's memorial fund, a nonprofit that they had started. And, um, she just kinda went over how successful that's been and how they're really looking forward to, um. Handing out some scholarship money for a couple Estacada High School students, so. Um, I just, I encouraged her to come to a city council meeting and just explain about their nonprofit at some point, so I mean, hopefully she reaches out to you, Melanie, but I just. I thought it would be cool that the, if the community could learn a little bit more about it, so. That's all I have to report.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mike?
I didn't have any meetings.
Nothing.
So?
No, we're doing ours tomorrow with. Traffic public safety.
Mr. Mayor. Um, I actually do have something to report on, I just thought about what we were talking, and I know Melanie, Melanie will probably speak to it too, but I attended the What's Up Estacada. Event, um, last month, last Monday, um, at the. New build at the community room at the library, um, it was well attended, it was really nice to see a lot of our, um, kind of committee members there. Um, got to, got to chat with them, um, really interesting, uh, exhibit by Merrick Stanton. Um, I learned a lot from that one, uh, about. What, what insects out there are actually bees, some that you wouldn't think are bees, or actually bees, some that you would think are bees or not bees. Um, but no, it was really good, um. Really well attended as far as I was concerned, there was a quite a, quite a bit of traffic going in and out of there. Um, it was a good event, I think another successful What's Up Estacada.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, we are at the city manager's report.
Okay, I just have a couple of things to share, uh, first of all, I wanted to remind you of tomorrow night, the joint workshop with the Traffic and Public Safety Committee. Um, to do a little more work, it'll be a workshop about our, our transportation system plan update. And so we'll have our consultant here to walk us through, facilitate that discussion and help. Um, to gather feedback from the council and the Traffic and Public Safety Infrastructure Committee already, they met together and they kinda compiled their own. Comments together on their own, um, so that's tomorrow night at six o'clock, and then Wednesday night, we'll be having a joint meeting with the. City Council, the Fire Board and the School Board to, um. Do some collaborative, just, I guess, a meeting of the minds, uh, so that will be, that will be good, that's at five thirty here at City Hall on Wednesday. And, um, also in regard to the transportation system plan update, there is a survey that is out there, I think it's been emailed to all the committees. It's been emailed to the council, it's on the website, um, to help, try to help, have people spread the word, I took the survey today. It's slightly daunting, um, yes, but, um, any, um, any feedback we can get from people. On that, you know, by even doing the portion, you know, if they. Can't do the whole thing, do what you can is get it submitted, and we'd love to get more feedback from the community, so encourage people for us. And then just, um, lastly, we're still planning for the grand opening at Wade Creek Park. Um, the new phase of that on June fourth, and that's a Sunday afternoon, it'll be from one to three, we'll have music, face painting. Uh, ice cream and guided tours, and we're pulling that all together in, in the next couple of weeks, so. That's what I have.
All right, well, thank you. Anything else?
No, that is all, so, uh, we're moving right along at a rapid rate, um. And then the next thing would be our executive session, so, yeah, I'll have you do. I'll have you do.
Be going into executive session.
Can I ask a question, I'm out here real quick, Melanie, um, so, um, I've talked to a lot of people in the, in the neighborhood that I live in, the Foothills, Bun, Bunyard, Edge Hill. Uh, neighborhood, um, would tomorrow night at the, at that meeting be a good time to, because there, there, there's concern that. It, that Cemetery Road might be safer without the stop sign at Foothills.
Oh.
Cause, um, right now, people pulling off of, off of Foothills onto Cemetery, um, both ways. It, it's really, it's really, uh. Probably a fifty fifty shot if, if the people that are coming are actually gonna stop at those stop signs, so, um, we're, um. Are a lot of the, you know, longtime residents of that, of our neighborhood, um, you know, thought maybe it might be safer. Um, to remove those, the stop sign there at Foothills and Edge Hill on Cemetery. Or Foothills and Cemetery.
I can look into that and, um, also talk, talk with our deputies about, you know, what they're seeing there and maybe spending a little time there.
I think traffic safety should be included in that.
And if, yeah, if we decide to do anything with it, we'd start with traffic and public safety.
Okay.
Yeah, and so tomorrow night, it's not a regular Traffic and Public Safety Committee meeting, so they'd need to wait probably till the next month. Um, if they wanted to come and address that, but I can start looking into the situation and seeing how. You know, what we would do.
Okay. Right, you have a question before we move on?
Yeah, but that time made me forget what it was.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, it's about the survey, um, I don't know if we have control over to adjust the survey, but want my help on that one, because I went through it myself to see what it was, people were. Telling me how daunting it was, the big thing is that people are getting confused by all the different descriptions in there, and nothing to like relay it back like a map or something, is there a way to? Like the maps, yeah, we had the packet, kinda gave us something to relay it back to, can we put that in there somehow?
There are, there are maps, I would recommend doing it on a computer and not on a phone or like an iPad, something that's smaller, I would get. On a computer.
I was on the computer and I made mine just didn't show up or something, I didn't, I didn't see the maps, I had to pull out mine from the council meeting to try to connect things together.
Interesting.
So, yeah, uh, uh, maybe it was just a fluke, it didn't pop up, but it was, it was definitely very confusing, and that's what people kinda told me a little bit.
Hmm, okay, I'll, I'll, like, when I was there, there was maps, um, and so I'll double check and maybe try it a couple of times in different browsers and make sure that that's actually.
It could have been, it could have been a fluke, but, uh, the people that sent us a lot, that's all they had to say, but. The people are taking it though.
Good, perfect, thank you.
Okay, back to the executive session, we're gonna, we're gonna be entering into executive session, we're gonna ask you to leave for a few minutes. While we're in executive session, and then we'll have you come right back into the room after we're done deliberating, but I will read from the script here. Um, it says, the Estacada City Council will now meet in executive session, the executive session is held pursuant to O R S one nine two. Point six, six, zero, which allows the council to meet in executive session, conduct liberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real estate. Transactions. Repro, representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session, all other members of the audience. Are asked to leave the room, representative of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any other deliberations during the executive. Session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session, at the end of executive session, we will return to an open session and welcome the audience back in the room. So, thank you.
And I was gonna. Twenty minutes or so, um. But they all took off already, so, all right, Wes, it could be twenty, twenty. You did, twenty, thirty minutes, I'm not, it could be a bit of a discussion, so.
Is there enough church out there, do you think they're gonna hang out?
No.
Um, well, really what we're talking about is is regulating sleeping. So I spent, I've spent a lot of time on this issue, actually co-taught a continuing legal education course on it with um. It was kind of one of those count uh point counterpoint things, I think was their idea with the then head of the ACLU. And he actually agreed with virtually everything that I said, which was that cities need to do these ordinances around health and safety. They need to look at factors on the ground, um that every city is going to have something that's slightly different. And that so long as they're uh reasonable in the approach, um so long as there's a a record to support the decisions and we can point to that, then we should be fine. Um, and if you look at the sample and I've there are a a number of iterations of this, the one that I provided cities, city staff was my most recent one for the scappus. Though I'd wanna make one change, and that is under camping materials, I would wanna add fireproof to the word tarps. And that's as a result of the meeting that Melanie and I had with our fire chief. So just to to give you an idea of what really worries them, what worries me. And actually, this is the last mayor and city council I would need to explain the importance of this to because you've dealt with it. Um, but that's fires. So about two weeks ago, our fire department had their first call to attempt fire. Um, where that the tent was on fire, the people managed to get out, um, they were safe, you know, thank goodness, but it was a total loss, of course, and you know what? He said to me is if this had been July, I obviously would have had a real problem. And we just can't have open flame, whether it's propane, whether it's logs, whatever. I mean, we're, we, this was written to keep, so that people could keep themselves warm, whether that's through a sleeping bag or blanket. We simply can't have um open fire um of any sort. Because of our trees and our wind and and all these other factors. If you look at camping materials, again, this is based on what other jurisdictions have experienced, so tents, uh fireproof tarps, um some people car camp, truck camp. Uh, if with that vehicle needs to be in a legal drivable condition. Um, other materials used to keep campers dry and warm. Camping materials explicitly does not include shanties, lean to's temporary structures, other built structures. The reason for that is over half of the city of Portland's fire related calls have been fires due to people constructing um wooden structures. And if you look at why we have the the uh state's uniform building code. It's not to make life harder for developers, it's not um. It's it's not to add bureaucratic layers to a process, it's to keep people safe. And um I have long believed, and I I said this at the CLE that I taught, that if you allow people to build a structure on public property that doesn't um that isn't in line with the state's building code, and then you don't allow people on private property to build that, A, you have a selective enforcement problem. But in my mind, the message that you're sending is that you care less about the lives of the people that you're allowing to live in a dangerous um condition. And that's why I think it's really important that wooden structures. Uh, these are extremely flammable structures, not be allowed. You know, again, their their camps, their uh their tents that are of have traditionally been free of charge to people. That they can pack up um when sleeping hours aren't happening. Uh, my recommendation, this ordinance says all the places where people can't camp, we have to figure out where they can. My recommendation is that it be hardscaped um for environmental reasons. Um, it's better to have uh impervious surface because it's easier to clean. Some people that are experiencing this um are less able to clean up after themselves. And so, again, one of the reasons that I believe that camping hours are really important is because I had a situation in the city of Gerhart where we had um uh campgrounds get um. It happened and um it was adjacent to a wetlands and we were getting it created a lot of problems from a health and safety perspective and then you know, people that that have trouble cleaning up after themselves, um vermin can get in there and it it creates other problems, so. Uh, I think that what I attempted to write in this was something that keeps all people safe, so that would be long-term residents to the city, um people that are passing through the city. Uh, visitors to the city, whether they're staying in a hotel, whether they're um staying with friends. Um, wherever they're staying, maybe it is in their truck or their camper, or maybe it is in a tent. Um, but the idea would be that um city staff would have an opportunity to clean up that area. So again, it's clean, and if people need to spend a second night there. They can set up their tent or sleeping bag or fireproof tarp or whatever it is and and stay in a clean environment a second night. Um. And the hardscaping just makes it a lot easier to clean up. And you don't have some of the environmental degradation that you do uh adjacent to water. So that will be a recommendation, though, you guys, it's your city and vision and values. Um, I think that it always makes uh sense for cities to lead with compassion and empathy. These people that are suffering, you know, they're they're experiencing obviously not a good time in their lives. Um, the goal also is to connect people with um services. A lot of those services aren't going to be within the city of Estacada, they're going to be out, but it's listening to people, it's hearing what they need. Uh, you know, we have um folks at Ant Farm that have done some outreach and and one of the people just realized that they didn't need to be in Oregon, they really needed a bus ticket home, um just because uh access to um substances they didn't need to be using and needed to get away from, and so um. I guess Ant Farm helped them find the money in order to to get home to their family and and that might be the right um solution for some people, some people might need, you know, assistance in terms of um rehab or or something of that nature, or just social services, particularly families. So um, these are kind of the, this is kind of the skeleton, and then as we get into and this is just deals with sleeping, there'll probably be an opportunity later this summer or fall where we can talk about more holistically. Um, other service providers and how to link people up with those. There is a an interpretation for House Bill three one one five that says that everything has to be in place before July one. Um, and after July one, you can't do anything. I completely disagree with that interpretation. I think with anything health and safety related, as you learn more. And like in Gearheart, we had a gentleman who ha- was camping in his car. Had a space heater, uh caught his jacket on fire, thankfully he was able to get out of his jacket, get out of the car. Um, didn't have any injury, didn't have to go to the hospital. But the car was a complete loss and our fire department was a half mile from there. So again, what I took out of that is no space heaters, you know, in enclosed things. Again, we want people to hopefully go to a warming center or stay warm via blanket sleeping bags, those sort of things. Um, so I think as as we continue to learn about this issue and how to help people, I believe we can change this code. Um, though, but because of that, I wanna err on the side of extreme caution and and because of that. Um, the because some people believe we have to have something besides what we currently have in place as far as camping. In place by July one, I would recommend that we adopt with an emergency clause, which I normally don't like emergency clauses because I like people to refer to things. But this is a public health and safety emergency, and I think we need to um keep all people safe and and that includes houseless people so that they're informed and and know where they can sleep. And again, if we have an area, um whether it's right away, whether it's hardscaped or not. Then there are other things that we can do, like traffic cones or something, so that the community is informed, so that they take caution. Just like a school zone, you know, everyone hopefully understands they need to slow down, they need to take extra care. This will be something like that, too, people need to be cognizant of of the fact that people might be sleeping there. Um, you know, between something like nine P M, six A M or seven A M, whatever it is. Um. Then to take extra caution. And then that's the idea, other idea being the city staff would have sufficient time to do, uh whether it's public works or others, do a little cleanup. So then that that area is also safe for members of the public during the uh non-sleeping hours. And if someone wants to like take a snooze on a bench or somewhere like that, they can always do that. What we're talking about is more camping with apparatus. And so that is, that's something that will be happening during those sleeping hours. Um. And so this represents, again, my most recent um tweaking of it. Though I would recommend that you put in uh fireproof tarps, and that's because I recently learned those blue tarps are not fireproof. And those um are not apparently not only flammable, but the plastic can melt on people, which seems just, you know, uh terrible. So we wanna avoid that.
Okay. Well, you've heard it, let's open it up to questions, any questions?
You said a lot of things, I don't agree with everything. Um, first of all, uh, you said that um, we have to have a place for them to go and you imply it has to be in our city. First of all, I don't agree with that. Um, I think you, one thing you did say was it has to do with um being compassionate to them. I think by giving them the idea that they can camp here and still have some sort of services is going to mislead that. Think the better thing to do would be to get them to a location as soon as possible, whether that's we have a fund that buys a bus ticket and send them into back in this Portland some more, they have those services that they need where they can get you know, the social services, they can have homeless shelters, they can have resources from for feeding and things like that that they might need. That is what I think is gonna be a more of a compassionate thing to do, rather than to set aside an area that one will cost the taxpayers money. And encourage potential camping out here, because there's other laws in other cities that that they may not like, and so they may see it as oh, that's welcoming out here, same thing in Malala has recently gone through and Sandy's gone through. We don't have to have a place in our city, we have, we have a bus route here that we can put them on a bus route, that they can be transported into a larger location. Um, second of all, the thing is, the, a lot of these laws, you you said that it says we don't have to, uh what we, what we, they can't do, and that you implied that that's something that we had to set a place for them. I don't see that in any of the laws, which I'm assuming is O R S one nine five dot zero zero five zero zero that you're referring to as some of those laws, so.
No, I'm referring to a Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals case called Johnson v City of Grants Pass. Which was decided in September twenty eighth of last year, it was a split opinion, two to one. The dissenting opinion asked that the United States Supreme Court take up that case. That has not yet happened, I don't know whether it will or whether it won't. But the majority opinion said that a city cannot have a prohibition, a strict prohibition on camping, it says a city can have time, place and manner restrictions.
Yeah, we can have time, place and manner restrict, uh restrict restrictions as discussed in one nine five dot five zero zero. Which then also goes through and talks about some of the things we can and can't do, am I correct?
So this case, this case postdates that statute. So there are two, there are two statutes, there's what was House Bill three one one five that says that a city can have reasonable camping restrictions. Um, which, what does reasonable mean? Like in every other context where reasonable has been used, like noise ordinance, it's been held to be unconstitutionally vague. So it was not giving me a huge amount of heartburn, frankly, until the Johnson v City of Grants Pass case came out. Which I think is, uh, there's no, I'm gonna be able to pull this site off of memory. If you, if you Google Johnson v City of Grants Pass, um, this circuit court case, which is Oregon's um, just applied to Oregon, the um Ninth Circuit applies to every city in the Ninth Circuit, which is basically the American West. That's where I'm pulling that language out of, and that's why I think that um if there was city-owned property outside of the city, I think that that was near the city that we could point to, I think, yeah, we would probably be uh safe with that, um. And, you know, we could probably get there and say that will be the location that between nine P M and six A M people can sleep. But um I think that saying we're on TriMet, this is a bus route, that's not going to get it done.
So the, I just wanted clarity on this case here, you're saying that in this case, which by the way it doesn't actually, isn't actually what sets our our laws, it just guides us in direction that they, that the legislation has to set those laws based upon the findings, correct? That the, that the modify the laws?
No, they, that one, the Ninth Circuit says we can't do something we can't.
Well, yeah, but I I know, but you said it's being pushed to the U S Supreme Court, correct?
Well, the dissenting opinion recommended that the U S Supreme Court take it up.
Yeah, and.
So it's, it's, it's. It's currently a law on the books.
Yeah, they just are trying to overturn it, the dissent, that.
The, the, this dissent was a vociferous defend dissent, okay, I mean, he was like because the the problem with the record in Grants Pass was that they were clearly trying to punish people for being homeless. So they, the, on their agenda item, it was titled vagrancy. And it just got worse from there.
Hmm.
So the idea between, the idea of the Eighth Amendment, which is against cruel and unusual punishment, is that if you are not allowing someone to sleep because of their status is not having a home. Then that is in fact cruel and unusual punishment. Which advocates around these laws have been pushing that forever, but that had never previously been the standard.
Well, that's the thing is, if we're targeting specifically towards homeless, I would agree with you, but if we said there's no camping in general across the city, whether applies to song with or without a home. That would, that isn't, that isn't targeting specifically, that's being generic across the entire, and equally I I guess not the word bias, but equally applying against everybody in the city, anyone in the city, we don't have a no camping in here. Now, I mean, that's which is.
I, I did not make the law on this.
Well, I'm, 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 I know, I'm, I'm going back and forth with you to figure this out, rather than just taking it at face value here.
I mean, I would encourage you to read the case before our next city council meeting. Um, I have read all of them and um, there's one in California, too, that um, seemed to suggest that people could sue a city under class action. Fortunately, that has not gone anywhere thus far, does not apply to us. But what I would say is that um the approach with the least legal risk would be to have reasonable time, place and manner restrictions based on health and safety regulations. And um in scappus, that was nine P M to six in the morning, that's the sleeping time. At which point um that our folks uh meaning police and public works would make sure that people um were up and that the um hardscaped area was free of debris. Because it is an area that members of the public jog and otherwise use. Um, that's what we did there, and if you wanna do something different, we certainly can. But if you want to do a citywide prohibition on sleeping on city property. Um, I think that you probably get sued by the ACLU.
And uh just, just for clarification, this is city property only. You know, so if if somebody was sleeping on, uh, you know, the back of a building or something like that around here, this wouldn't apply.
No, they can be trespass from private property, and frankly, people could be trespass from city property too, if they're breaking other laws.
But that's only if the property owner.
Correct, so we, we've, we've actually had conversations with um, other jurisdictions that own public property in the city in order to help them so that they can regulate sleeping on that. And again, um I mean, this, in the grand scheme of things, is fairly restrictive. Um, but reasonable and based on health and safety. And I think if you were to get more restrictive than this, like if you had a five A M wake-up time. Then it would, you know, most people aren't getting up at five in the morning. Um, yeah.
Jerry first.
So what I'm about to say is gonna be a controversial statement to a lot of people in this room, but um the majority of the homeless or the houseless in Estacada have lived in Estacada longer than fifty percent of our population. So putting them on a bus, giving them a bus ticket, making it, making it another city's problem is uh it's wrong, you know, us just putting them on, putting them on TriMet and sending them to another city, that's, that's, to me, that's wrong. Um, like I said, a lot of them have lived in this city longer than fifty percent of our population, so um, I completely disagree with that statement, that's all I got.
Paul, with, with what's being proposed here, what locations are, would, would someone be allowed to set up that?
Well, I think that's one of the main things that I was hoping to discuss with you. Uh, again, I, I think something that's hardscaped is easier to keep clean, which is why in other jurisdictions, I've we've looked at places that were hardscaped. Um, you know, places that are away from a wetlands. Uh, but ultimately, it's whatever you think. Um, it, you could do it, you could say the city right away in a certain zone. You could say city right away in a certain location. Um. And you can come up with the sleeping hours um that you deem appropriate, I, you know, as long as those are reasonable. Um. And, you know, I mean, I think you, you wouldn't want people with, in an area with like heavy truck traffic or something like that, I mean, we're, we would try and do this to keep them safe. Um, but ultimately, you know the city better than I do.
Yeah, so you have another question?
Um, I just wanted to clarify what I was saying to Jerry, that's how you'd accounts to ten bush. I'm not saying we just go and get rid of them, I'm saying we send them to where resources are so they can get the help they need and come back with the help. But they don't have that out here, and so they, they're, they're, they're on the street, we keep push, keeping them here on the street, they're not gonna get, but they need in order to get off the street. So getting them to resources, they can get off the street and then come back with those resources is what we need to do. That's the biggest problem, I think, with what's happening in the state here, is instead of working to fix the problem with the people that are having it, and that's giving them resources, figuring out what's getting them on the street in the first place, we just wanna give them a place to go stay. And we're reinforcing that piece, whether that be drugs, whether it be uh, whether it be mental issues, whether that be financial issues, whatever it is. We're not doing the job, whether that's city, county, state, doesn't matter. As elected officials, and we are failing those people to do and fix the problem that they are suffering from. Whatever that might be, and so it's giving them a place to continue to sleep is not doing that. Putting them in touch with those resources and the right location is what our job is to do. And so saying here, here's a hard surface you can sleep on, that is an inhumane statement. But a humane statement would be say, hey, there is a shelter here, you can go get, you can go get sleep on, you can get food here, you can get hooked in with social services. You can probably get cleaned up and help and find a job like they do at the Portland Rescue Mission. And all these other places across the area, they have these resources, if they're suffering from drug or mental, there are resources there for them to do that. They are not here in Estacada. So my point to send them there was not to be inhumane, but to get them in touch with what they need. That is what Ant Farm does, they get them in touch with those, but they don't, they said themselves, they can't do it here. So, that's my statement on that.
Paul and, or Heidi first.
Uh, okay, um, so from what I understand is that we can offer those resources to say something is insanity, but for the immediate, we cannot tell somebody to leave, we have to, as the city, offer them somewhere to be if they are in the wrong spot. So as, so we need to figure out what that is, am I correct in that, Peter?
Yeah, so the idea is, if you can't just you can say people can't sleep on certain public property, you can say they can't sleep in public parks, you can say they can't sleep on sidewalks. In fact, their American with Disabilities Act reasons that you don't want people camping on sidewalks because people in a wheelchair have to go out into the street because the sidewalk's blocked and they get hit, then we potentially have liability. So it's like, the reason I don't, the reason why I've said no sidewalks is not to be inhumane, it's recognizing that there are people with mobility issues that need a clear sidewalk that hopefully has ADA ramps. But you have to have someplace within the city where they can sleep with materials with a sleeping bag during certain hours. And we cannot just say you're prohibited from sleeping in the city on public property twenty-four hours a day, we can't do that. Um. Legally, I mean, if we did that, we would have very high legal risk, that's my reading of the case, which I've read multiple times. Um.
Once again, what was the case again, I'm sorry?
It's Johnson v City of Grants Pass.
It's the very first thing that comes up when you type in Johnson versus. I just.
Does Johnson v City of versus Grants Pass override state versus Bar- Barrett? Which established part of the one nine five five zero zero?
I mean, you can, you can um you can read the case. Um, the case is that the city of Grants Pass like took incredibly punitive action against houseless people, they had between fifty and six or maybe, it was either forty or sixty, the upper number was six hundred. Which I haven't been to Grant's past in a long time, but that stunned me, houseless people living in the city. Um, they did not allow them to have a blanket or anything to keep warm.
Yeah, we, I get the Grant's pass went way too far, I get that, I'm not saying that, what I'm saying is the state, is state v Barrett overridden by Johnson versus City of Grants Pass. Cause if not, the state v Barrett says the section does not apply, does not prescribe to this or limit cities or counties from enacting and enforcing local criminal offense for unlawful camping. That's what state v Barrett supports, so my question is, does the Johnson versus City of uh uh, uh, Grants Pass override state v Barrett, Barrett? If not, then we need to evaluate that, if it does, maybe some parts don't, but that gives us, that right there gives us, it's a, it's a state court uh decision. That gives us the power to enact stuff for enforcing criminal camping. So my question is, there's a lot of questions in here, and I presented with one side, I'd like to see the whole picture, that's what I'm asking. Because I know what the people of Estacada are gonna want, they're not gonna want us to designate a spot in our city for people to camp, you saw what happened when Malala did that, so I wanna make sure before we go that route. We've exhausted every other option of what we can do.
You're free to ignore my legal advice.
I, I get that, I'm asking you as our city attorney, if one case overrides another, and if it does, can you explain?
Yeah, federal law override state law.
Okay, I thought you said that was a state, a state decision, it wasn't federal yet.
The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals is our federal court, that's why we go to the U S Supreme Court.
I think we beat that enough, um, Paul.
Uh, that, that kinda leads into, to one of my questions, you've mentioned Grants Pass, six hundred and some people, can we quantify what, what we're facing in Estacada, do we have some numbers that we can point to? To say that, uh, you know, maybe from, from, uh, we got our, our sheriff representatives here too, what, what are we facing, how big of an issue is it that we've got folks camping on public property? Um, that we wanna make sure that we're addressing this?
I don't have a number. Um, and that, I think we're talking about maybe two different things here, because I think there is an ongoing conversation that we should have. Um, about finding out, you know, what's, what's the data, how many people are here living in Estacada who are homeless and and sleeping outside, um, but you, I think by looking around, we can tell we have a very minimal situation where people are sleeping on public property um on an ongoing basis, and so um, I think what we're trying to do here is to make sure that we are following the the legal issues that are at hand by making sure that um this, that code is very restrictive about there's no camping anywhere except we can come up with, with one spot, so if we do have an issue, if somebody's in a wrong spot where they shouldn't be spending the night, we can say hey, you can't be here, but, but you can go over there, um, and so I think that's what we're, but we have also very limited, I haven't been able to come up with any kind of good recommendation on where that might be. Um, I think it's in the code, it says a thousand feet from schools, a thousand feet from daycares, and we just have kinda changed codes to allow daycares in the Riverfront Commercial area. And so that kinda a thousand feet can stretch a long ways, so I'm not sure, I think that's what we're looking for now is what can we live with? Um, if there's a situation where there's somebody who needs to not be. Downtown on the sidewalk, um, in the middle of downtown, where do we say, you know, hey, you, you need to go over there and you can stay. To stay the night there.
I think we have to look at where we have resources as well. So we have the bathrooms. That would be entered into this and. Not to say this in a mean way, but you know, a place where they'd be safe, right? Where there's lighting, hardscaped. I mean, the portal is kind of that very location. You have a grassy area, no play. Uh, equipment out there. It's close to our city workers, so they can keep an eye on situation. We also have law enforcement that has easy access to that area. You have good lighting, you have restrooms. It's right at the beginning. We can keep an eye on it. It's safe. I mean. I don't know how do you feel about this, guys? I mean, I'm just trying to think of a quick.
That's the only place I've been able to come up with. Um, and if we can. Change, you know, if it turns out that it's not, or we come up with a better idea, we could change that, but it is.
Where are you saying? Where's the portal?
It's right at the beginning, right before you go into Timber Park.
So where cities are having conflicts is people camping in residential areas. It's people camping in. Parks that members of public use. Sometimes there's paraphernalia in those parks after people camp there and that's not safe. So. The way that I built this is. To avoid conflict between. Because there is compassion fatigue and there is empathy fatigue and people are expressing that they're tired. And there are people that are expressing that this is unfair. That's just the reality of the situation that we're dealing with. And so where is the area that there's mo, there's least likely? To be conflict and where's the area where there? Least likely to be some sort of negative health and safety outcome. And, you know, I think that. Melanie's pointed out that area to me in the past. There may be a better area. I don't know whether there is or not.
Are we going to look at, you know? Like a limit on how many people, like if we said the portal, how many people can? Camp there per night and, you know, and if it's kind of like repeat nightly, nightly, and then it just starts getting kind of. Word spreads. I mean, I'm just. Thinking out loud here.
So I, I think that. I think that if, if there was to be an issue where. That was over prescribed. Or subscribe, then I think that we could. Look at alternatives at that point. Um, I, I think that with. The reasonable hours we have, so that, you know, nine to six or nine to seven, then. You know, that ensures that people get the amount of sleep that they would need in order to function the next day, but that's very different than. A quote unquote camp where people are staying there twenty-four hours a day. And if you look at those sort of camps, that's where. What looks like garbage to us, but might be possessions to other people starts building up and that it attracts, you know. Vermin or other things and those are all the things we're trying to avoid. So this way we can keep it clean. You know, there are probably some people that don't want to get up at six in the morning. And so that might be a disincentive to them. If you want to sleep late, you might want to find a city that, you know, has less restricted hours, but. Again, I mean, we would be talking about nine hours of sleep time. And just, you know, before people pack up their, their belongings and go on with their day. Um, you know, there's some people that probably don't want to pack up their belongings every day. And so they might go to do a jurisdiction that doesn't have this sort of ordinance. City of Portland's trying to pass an ordinance like this. I don't know whether they'll do it or not, but. Yeah, I mean, I, I think if we're talking about health and safety, part of it is just keeping things clean and. I've seen some, I mean, I saw a guy in a, uh, with a pickup and a. Camper trailer on the back that, you know, maybe he's houseless. Didn't look like he was bothering anyone, you know, and they're, all cities have people like that, folks like that, that. Maybe through. I mean, the housing prices are very expensive. So again, what, what we're trying to do is prevent. Problems that have happened in other jurisdictions is in terms of conflict. If it's not working, then we can revisit it. If the Supreme Court takes this up and overrules the Ninth. Circuit Court, then we'll have more flexibility.
But bottom line, we just need to put something in play.
We need something in, in order to say you can't sleep here in this park next to the library. We need to say, person that wants to do that, no, not here, but you can here.
We do have the art code that says parks are closed from dusk to dawn and, um, a general no camping on city property. Um, type of a code for. Uh, probably different situations than what we're talking about here.
This doesn't apply to the portal because that's a respite, right?
Right. Somebody could be pulling apart there. Yeah, we, we tried to close that at night too. It's a little more difficult, but, um, we do, if somebody. Tried, tried to stay there and not move on. That's when we usually. Unlist some assistance from a deputy to help them.
With the, um, Sheriff's Office, are we staffed for you guys to go wake people up every morning and clean up their mess at six AM?
I'll let Lieutenant Mendoza speak to that. My recommendation would be to make it seven because our Public Works crew comes in at seven, Monday through Thursday. And then our plants guys are here, um, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And if they. Could, could, you know, get people moving. If somebody is going to be obstinate about it, then we probably need to call non-emergency and have a deputy roll through. But I'm, how would you recommend Lieutenant Mendoza?
Yeah. So that. That's probably a difficult question to answer, but the city of Estacada is not staffed for that. Um, deputy wise. Um, and if we look at, um, you know, throughout Clackams County and the, and the jurisdictions that we serve. Uh, we do get calls like that. Let's, let's say we're talking about eighty second avenue. We do get calls. Uh, about that when businesses are opening, or maybe it's a, uh, business that, that's open twenty-four hours a day and they're asking for. People to be moved along. Um, those are like a trespass type of issue and we will. Handle, handle those when, when we have time, when it's available. Um, generally those early morning, you know, six AM. Excuse me. Um, we're not as busy, um, but, um, but. The call though does start, um, climbing, so. So we will respond to those calls. They are a low priority call. Um, and out here in Estacada. Um, when there's no, as you know, there's no Estacada deputy that that falls on the East County car. So it would be. Uh, when they are available, like as a, um, common practice that would not be. I, I guess I would go back to, uh, the, the latest numbers that I've heard about. Um, homeless or house, houseless population in Estacada is, is six or less. Um, but it would not be like a nightly duty that a deputy would go around to find people and wake them up from wherever they're at.
How difficult has it been to enforce? City ordinances, like if they're not, if there's used needles that are. Um, a problem for the public that's using that area, trash, waste, bodily fluids. Um, to enforce the people that are violating that to trespass them. How difficult is, I mean, is that a realistic expectation that? If someone is violating those rules, that there's going to be any kind of realistic enforcement?
The, the highest likelihood is they're going to be just asked to move along. Um, if they refuse, then we, you know, you would need a, um. Some sort of crime ordinance to, to make them move or have some sort of enforcement there. Um, as far as. Um, you know, typically what happens, you'd ask them to take their things with you. They're going to want to take their things with you, with them. Um, but, but they may not, right? And then it's a matter of who's going to clean this up. Um, and. If, if it's clear that it's their items, I mean, you can look at. Uh, violations of, of littering, if it's clearly their items. Um, but these are all just this enforcement tools that law enforcement has.
Thank you.
Falls a lot to Public Works to do cleanup too. Um, if the, if there is a person who's causing a problem with littering and befouling. And they can, they get asked to move along, um, by law enforcement. Um, then it's, it's our public works guys that come through and clean up after that.
Just checking the, the mood of the council here. Curious to see what the general consensus in is on this. Um, you know, I, I for one, I'm. I'm comfortable with the legal. Uh, opinion here. I, I like having something on the books here that we can address, something that would keep us, uh, in compliant with. With the law as well too. And I think ultimately it'd be nice, maybe we could revisit this, come back with some. Some properties that the city could identify for us as potential places, but that's, that's where I'm at. I'd like to hear. Is, is that it? Am I on base? What are some other folks thinking here?
I'm in the same boat.
Well, I feel like, yeah, we have to have something as, as far as legality sake. We need to have something in play here, but. I would like to have it be, you know, pretty fluid and flexible that if we need to change something. I mean, I know Peter just said this is a skeleton. But, you know, this, I guess, start from here and move forward and bring things back and get some more numbers and data and places.
Sorry, I take a minute here to read and kind of familiarize myself a little bit, which. Um, it looks like Johnson v Grants Pass builds on Martin versus, uh, versus Boise, which kind of. Outlines a lot of, and started a lot of this one. So, um, there's a lot here to read and understand, and I think it's. Solely prudent for us to understand that, not just from the single. It is our attorney. I get that, but still this is a big decision to make. Because it sets a precedent going forward in what we do. So if we set a place and then we find out we have other options. Then that can something they can roll back to. So what, what I am proposing is that we table. Passing this tonight and then on our next council meeting, we had, we've had two weeks with the cases he's presented us tonight to review them, understand them. Pose any questions we might have. And then if it's, if, if we still feel like we need to pass it and set a place like Portal or something like that. At our next meeting, then we can pass it then. But that gives us a chance to do the legwork. I think we should do on this one now that we have some of the cases to review and understand. His legal position, so.
Yes. Um, and I think, I think that's a great idea to not, this wasn't being presented to you to pass tonight, but just as a discussion point to see if. This is the kind of, um, if, if we could use this as the template to develop one for. The city of Estacada to bring back to your next meeting. The only location that I have. I've been racking my brain to try to think where and, and the portal is really the only location. Um, that I have come up with, that would be a good place. Um, and in the, um. I will say in the summertime, which is when we do tend to see more people, um, who are houseless and they're spending the nights out here. Um, we do have the SRO is not in, in school and he's here in the morning. Um, Monday through Thursday anyway. And so, you know, we would have that additional person first thing in the morning during kind of our peak season. When people tend to like to come out here. Um, and as far as the, um, folks who live out here year round, um, they. Mostly, you know, you. I don't know, not sure where they stay. Um, but they must have some place that they have, you know. They figured out how to function in the way that they do. And so, um. I, I guess that's so, my question is, is this template good for us to follow to bring something back to you? And then a, any other ideas? I have nothing else to present to you other than the portal. I mean, I don't. I, I know other, some people like Happy Valley has sent them to, um. Like city rights away in the industrial area, industrial zone. And I don't feel like that's a good option for us.
And then I'd have to ask, how much is it going to cost us to have somebody secure the area, then bathrooms put on there?
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, just doesn't make any sense.
And I don't read this to require. Bathrooms or any of that infrastructure. I mean, I, I really, I really read the Johnson case as. Outlining the minimum. So we cannot prohibit them from having a blanket or a sleeping bag. Because they specifically say that. We have to have some, we can't have a citywide prohibition. We have to be able to point to somewhere. The reason we have to be able to point to somewhere is so that we can say no to other places. Um, and that's how I read it. Um, and I would encourage all of you to read it. It actually is far more readable than the, um, the Boise case, which is a real slog.
Are there any minimum requirements for that location? Outlined at all?
No, I mean, the, the judge was really. The judge answered more questions than the Martin judge has answered. But there's a lot left that's open for interpretation.
Um, and the reason why I was encouraging you guys to read it is because there's this one thing, um, and. Currently what's said is that the opinion that respects most affirmed aspects prior to, to the prior rulings of Martin v Johnson. I'm sorry, Martin, uh, v Boise. But one of the key things that came out of Martin v Boise, which is listed here. Cities are not required to build or provide shelters or for persons experiencing homelessness. I don't know, is that wording in there? If that means that we don't have to have a place or just a shelter, um, but. It's identifying in Martin v Boise that we may not have to have a place for them to go in our city. So we can designate something else. I don't know Johnson overrules that. That's why I'm saying to read it. That's why I'm asking for the time. Because I'm understanding it differently versus what's here.
The Martin case said that if there isn't shelter space, you can't have the sit, sleep, lie ordinance. So the issue with Martin and the city of Boise had something like thirty homeless. All right, just to put this in perspective. They had several shelters. Um, the shelters were available to some people, but not available to others. Um, for instance, there's some shelters that are for single adults, but not families. And so that, the gist of the case, which is extremely hard to read. The Court of Appeals version, it's very convoluted, was essentially like. If there isn't shelter capacity, you can't prohibit them from camping on the street. So to bring that to Portland. It, there was talk of the former Wapato getting turned into a shelter. A number of years ago, and then that was controversial. So let's say that anyone could go to Wapato and they had like six hundred beds. And there were, uh, they were all open and there were three hundred people on the street. The city of Portland could say, hey, three hundred people on the street, we have shelter beds for you, so you can't camp on the street. What Martin says is if you don't have shelters and Grants Pass didn't have any. Then you can't prohibit them from sleeping. But you can have reasonable time, place and manner restrictions. But Grants Pass didn't have reasonable time, place and manner restrictions because they didn't allow them to do things like keep warm. So like. Their, their code was so restrictive. That it didn't allow, um. The minimum that a judge deemed, you know. I'm not going to say reasonable, but it didn't, it essentially didn't allow sleeping. And so as a result, now they can't regulate it at all. So basically like any park in Grants Pass, they can't regulate the sleeping because of this. Terrible fact pattern and because they're, um, because of the code they passed. So that's what, when you read the concurrence in the Johnson case. One of the points that the guy, or not the concurrence, the dissent, one of the points that the dissenting judge made was. You basically made, you, the majority have basically made it so the city can't regulate it at all and he's not wrong. Right? And so then that's why he was like, US Supreme Court, please take up this case. So I don't know whether they'll take it up or not. If they don't take it up, the other thing would be an en banc, which would be the entire Ninth Circuit. But the facts of this case are so bad that this isn't one you necessarily want. Uh, rulings on. That said, if it goes to the Supreme Court, they're going to rule how they rule and then we'll deal with it.
But for now.
All right.
Bring it back, bring it back in a couple of weeks. I guess it's three weeks.
Got any other options at that time? Forward and we'll, we'll take a look at it.
Okay. And you can read up on any more that you want to read up on. Um, and we'll just try to present the best scenario. That we can come up with. And if you have any ideas. Talk about it in three weeks, so.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that discussion. That was helpful.
Okay. Next on the list, I have Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero one eight, a resolution. Oh, we're going to put this on hold like.
Yes, let's put this, the resolution that I have on there for the Community Heart and Soul Project. And would like to just hold off on that to we can. And we'd like to just hold off on that to we can get some more information for the council to base the decision on. Um, so we'll put a pause on that. And that's all of council business.
All right, uh, do I have any more assistance, uh, group comment anywhere online or in other place? Okay, uh, it is mayor council reports and comments. We'll start off on mic.
Just wanna thank everyone for coming tonight. Thank you for the deputy and the chief for showing up and answering questions, being available. We appreciate that. And thank you to the staff for preparing all the information.
Just as well, thanks for the, uh, great discussion tonight. All that were involved in for getting us prepped on the city side too. Thank you.
Okay. Peter, I do respect your, your legal opinion, but I think it's also my job to challenge it sometimes even and get you, get the answers out. Even if it comes out that it lands with what you're saying is exactly what we need to do, but it's my job to to at least ask the questions and, and not just take one person's opinion, whether experienced and professional or not. For, for granted, it's my job to look into it. And that's why, you know, I'll, I'll read into these things and understand them and it may come out, and I'm sure it will, that everything you're saying is exactly what we need to do. But I, I still, so don't, don't take it personal or anything, please.
Well, I never, I, I think it's important for the community to hear the conversation. Because I think that there's, I don't, first of all, I don't, you know, to me, this isn't a particularly hot meeting compared to other meetings I've been through, but, um, and this is a, this is a this is a subject where I feel very comfortable on. But I think there's a lot of misinformation out there, and I think if nothing else, that the calm, the back and forth between the two of us hopefully helped educate members of the public on what we can and can't do.
And not having him arrested at the end of this.
So feel better about.
Bring it on. We got the recording.
No, um, but, uh, y- yes, and so it, it is definitely good discourse and I hope that the, uh, those who are watching from the city will actually read up and understand that as well. Um, and so they understand where we go with things and also give us their input as well. Um, other than that, I appreciate everybody here tonight and, uh, for those sticking around after a very long um, wait outside. So, and, uh, yeah, thank you very much.
Great. Um, first off, yes, thank you guys for sticking around after that long executive sessions. Really appreciate it to be in here. Um, thank you staff. You're amazing as always. And thank you guys for the wonderful discussion, um, and, uh, you know, getting through this meeting. This was not a hot heated meeting and, um, in the past it really could have been. I just really appreciate you guys, good discussion and good comments. So thank you.
Uh, thank you much, so much for the discussion. I really appreciate everybody approaching the, uh, the issue of unhousedness with empathy. It's really important. And, uh, thank you to the city staff and the citizens for being here as always. Uh, Spring Water Grange is having their strawberry show, social on June tenth. And the proceeds will be maintenance and repair of the building, so that should be fun. Uh, this past weekend, I attended, uh, the Beaver State Fling at Milo McIver. It's a disc golf tournament. And, uh, it's part of a national tour and a lot of pros come here. It's very good for Estacada to come and experience that brings tourism in. Um, Milo is rated one of the best disc golf courses in the world and the number one in Oregon. So I hope everybody can go out there and play. It's really fun.
I think most of, uh, pretty much all the councils already said it best tonight and thanks again to everybody and it's been a long night and so, um, see you guys tomorrow.
And as always, I wanna thank staff and we thank Peter for sitting in on this. I wanna thank you guys. I mean, like I said, we all came for you. So at the end of all this, it's, it's you that makes the difference. So we hope we, uh, took care of the issues that you might be worried about, or at least got them on the table. Um, and that said, I wanna thank you for just being a part of the whole thing. Um, and that I'm going to adjourn this meeting.